Put us back on, right?
Yeah.
Let us know when we're going, we're good and back.
Are you with us now?
Ah, there we go.
Okay. All right, we're back in, we are now back in session, so is it the wish of the board to take a motion to pass the, and accept the contract for the interim police chief as presented by the town administrator?
I'll take a motion to accept the interim police chief contract that has been done up by Ryan.
Yeah.
He does.
Second that, you will make a motion.
I did make the motion.
You said take a motion.
Oh, I will make a motion, I apologize for that, I will make the motion.
I'm voting on the. Police chief contract, which we've already discussed.
To approve the police chief's contract.
Excellent.
Motion made and seconded that we accept the contract as presented by the town administrator for the interim police chief.
A second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
It's just like showing up.
Yay.
Passed, okay, just in time for our workshop.
Yeah, perfect.
Good stuff, huh?
What was the aggressive timetable voted for consulting firm, voted on the search committee?
Queens.
Touching you up.
Have a fun evening, did you?
Ten minutes.
Really? That was quick.
Someone complained about the, how much they liked the project, the superintendent complained about his being new and what he's gonna look into, it voted unanimously and we were done.
Okay, sounds like fun.
Did you get your paperwork?
I did not get my paperwork, did you steal my paperwork, Jeff?
I did.
Ah, Ryan did, same.
Okay, in this workshop format, just to point out, when Ryan sent out the sheet and what you see on the agenda, that does not suggest we have to go in that order. Any of these areas can be discussed at any time, this is just like a checklist, so don't feel that we have to go from that top and work down. In the past, when we've had our board meetings for, for goals for the, of the year, it was always the request of the, the chair and Dan did this, that we think about it before we're here and then come in with some ideas of our own. I put down for each of you my own ideas that I wanted to let you know at least number one, where I stood, based on being ten years on the board and now as your chairman. Some of these things I know are long-term and maybe wish list type things, but they are areas that I strongly believe in and feel that they at least need to be put out and discussed, so as, if nothing else, to send a message to our people. As I said, top priority is keeping our staff, I think we've had enough turnovers, you know, to last for a while. So that's why I am suggesting the things that I was suggesting in terms of, I gave you one, but in terms of wages and health insurance, and these are long-term things in terms of one to three, three to five was an estimate on my part. If, if we can go along those, that route, but in the same sense, I would like to mention that one of the things I think we as a board need to decide in terms of what we're gonna really have as our goals, is are we looking short-term or long-term, because depending upon the direction in which the board wants to go will affect obviously everything. In terms of budgeting, if we're looking at long-term things and long-term allocations, for example, we need a public safety building. And I strongly, as I put in my letter to you guys, call it a letter, we've been, we've been in need of this for the ten years I've been serving and even then, before then, the need is not going to go away. The buildings are getting older, not newer. So that, I, these are things that I feel strongly about and would like to at least discuss and ask the board to be thinking in terms of which direction you wanna go into. Piecemeal, short-term, as opposed to some long-term goals and then the purpose of the workshop is just to kick things around and so forth, we're not taking votes on anything, that anything that we're gonna deal with as a business will come up on any, another agenda based on what we come out of this session with as our goals, so. Those are mine and anyone else is free to jump in.
I'd like to jump in, I, I'm all about long-term and, but the only thing that hurts me is how does this new, let's say, public safety building, how is that gonna affect my tax rate or anybody, any residents' tax rate, is it gonna go up to six hundred dollars a year? I can't, I can't absorb that, I'm on a fixed income and I'm sure there's a lot of other seniors in town who would say the same thing. That's a lot of money, I mean, so I don't know, I mean, I am for long-term, but I have to be budget constant, budget conscious for my family, 'cause I know what we have and what we can afford and we're still not, we still don't know what's going on with the school yet and how that affects us. And now, you know.
But if we were gonna consider, for example, the idea of the buildings, et cetera, and specifically to what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Just the research alone will provide answers to that, we can get an idea of what we're talking about, because
Right, 'cause I mean. Yeah, right, but.
What it costs a few years back when it got voted down just by fifty votes.
Yeah.
I'm sure there's a big difference today, but again, by researching it and so forth, if we were to do this, to try to get it, the need is not gonna go away, it's not gonna get cheaper.
Right.
That's the whole thing, the further we kick this can down the road, the more expensive it's gonna be in the long term.
Yeah, and then, then another thing is, so you put public safety into their own building, so that means fire and police, am I correct?
Yep.
Okay, so now what happens to the, well, there's, what happens to the old fire station, do we maintain that, are we rehabbing it? So that's another, so it's more cost on top of a new building, now you're still maintaining these other buildings, they vacate, except for the one they rent.
Not necessarily, I mean, that, if, if you're building a public safety building, it's gonna have its fire. Right now, our, our fire station, we pay rent.
No, no, I, the other one, I'm talking about this one right up here.
That was just built as a barn, it wasn't meant to be a fire station.
So we knock it down.
A lot of, we wouldn't use it as a fire station, we've had equipment that had to be made specially just so it would fit in there because it's so small.
So what I'm getting at, you're still gonna maintain electricity, heat and water in the building, correct? So now you have more expense, not only you're paying for a new public safety complex, but now you're gonna, if you wanna do something else into that building, you have to rehab it, obviously. And now you're talking more expense on top of a new public safety building, am I correct?
So, Peter, usually what happens when, and I think we've done some version of this in the past, but I'm sure it's been long enough, we probably have to start a little bit over. Usually you do a feasibility study and part of the feasibility study isn't just the idea of finding the location or how to do the building, but it's also, what do you do with what's left, right?
Yeah.
So some towns take those places, Paxton's a good example, they had this little tiny, like, post office, tiny size little building that used to be the police department, they moved their police out of there to the new public pa- safety complex. And then what they did is they actually rented out the building, so they rented out to a business.
Great idea.
So, but it allows you those opportunities, but that's where you jive into, you know, the feasibility study to see, what do we do next, what's the plan, so that, you know,
Yeah. Okay. So that's the, that's the answer I'm looking for, 'cause I don't, I don't know, so that's a great answer, I like it.
So if it was a priority, I mean, public safety buildings don't get built tomorrow 'cause of the idea today, you know, it's a,
Right.
you know, to Jeff's point, it's several years out because you gotta get all the ducks in the row, you gotta make sure if you had, do we already have a feasibility study round one?
Yeah. Yeah.
We are ready to do it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So do they even have land for?
Yeah, we have land and a well and.
Oh, yeah. That's what the, that's what that land is, uh, we got that.
The land is across from the pellet company where the, uh.
Oh, where the tower's going?
With the dispatch towers going, just to be clear on which tower.
Yeah.
Of what's five acre lot, right?
Yeah, which we got.
That's way down hill.
So the land has been identified as viable with a well, it was going to be potentially as a senior center and then, then a combination.
Steve ruined it for us. Mm-hmm.
In terms of feasibility study, the money was approved by ARPA and is, is ready to go. Also, um, this is new information tonight, but spoke with John, John Zotto, got approval to do an appraisal. So that, that answer will be known as well, because it would be cheaper to purchase a business like John's Auto and rehab it than it would be to build a brand-new building.
Where's John's Auto?
Right on sixteen.
Sixty Gardner Road.
Next to the pop place.
Right across on the bus.
From the bus depot.
Oh, on the right, yeah.
So we're gonna appraise it, see if the numbers are even close, if he's like, there's no way, or, yeah, that's close, then we can engage that several times.
Let's, let's, do you get all the acreage, Jeff?
I don't, but you'll get a full report.
Yeah, I was one of the ones that blocked it, myself and Dan, along with the fire department and the police department blocked it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, actually, no, not the police, just where, to see if it would be viable for them and what their thoughts were. And we were taken through the whole thing and the fire department at that point in time said they, they could deal with it. I think, I think the police were there, at least a couple of them. The house doesn't really make much sense, but it could be taken down and a small police facility could be erected or. There's, there's a lot of options, there's, the buildings are big enough to house the fire trucks, it could be easily added on to house more, there's, there's a lot of options.
So you really have to do, so in a feasibility study, would they study that property and a brand-new property, so?
Yeah.
Another thing to point out, whether you, you may not be aware of it, Peter, having a building, the public safety, is like the linchpin of all of the building's problems, because we found this out in the past, like, ten years that I've been here. We're, all the buildings need work, for example, but let's say the clock building, which is a historical building, it's a library, et cetera. There's money available, but not as long as it's being used.
The basement.
For having town offices in it, okay, the slave building, this was built as a, a classroom.
This is a temporary building, is it not?
This was a temporary classroom, that's what it was built for. So, once we move, if we can move, to, to another building, it opens up all the other possibilities of getting monies for the various buildings, so this is, all the thoughts that behind this is, if it gets passed, it offers all these other opportunities. And the land, we got, Steve, Senator Brewer got it for us, it was five hundred thousand dollars that they got for the, the site for the building.
Yeah, it was a land swap.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, with the street.
Yeah.
So, that's some of the history behind it, 'cause I've been in all the committees that have worked on it.
Yeah.
So financially, why this decision matters so much is you have a ton of expiring debt next year. Over two hundred thousand dollars inspiring debt, expiring debt, which is a couple million dollars in borrowing power. Additionally, there's addition, there's extra free cash, I hate to use the word extra, but there's more free cash than our target.
Yeah.
So that money could be used for something, the debt money could be used for something. We have long-term capital and ARPA money and then hopefully federal money coming from the infrastructure. So if, if the decision is, we'll build a public safety building, but it can cost no more than five million dollars, because the tax impact on the average person is, say, three hundred and fifty dollars or something like that, just making up numbers, then we can configure all of the finances to match that decision or to, to try and make that a reality. If you don't make that decision, then all of that capacity is gonna be going towards some of the things that come up, like buying a fire truck or paving a road that somebody wants. So you'll spend it and good things will happen, but you'll never have the opportunity to solve the bigger problem. Or if you say, we're not gonna fix any of the buildings, then we can use some of this capacity to make these buildings more, last longer, be more user-friendly, et cetera. But the only thing we can't do is not make any decision, because then the, the finances get chewed up and that's how you get bad long-term planning.
Right, so the old fire station right up here beside the, right across from the gas station, now didn't they just put a mitigation system in that building?
They did.
So that's like flushing fifteen thousand down the toilet.
And they're gonna put a roof on it in the next couple of years.
We just keep throwing more money.
I understand that, so.
Putting a twenty-five thousand dollar HVAC system in the police department.
Why?
Because there is no.
They don't have AC?
Nope.
They haven't for two years.
Put a mini-split on the wall.
That's what they do.
That's the. It don't cost twenty-five thousand.
They do when you pay prevailing wage.
They still don't cost twenty-five thousand, that's a small area. Who's got, who's got these contracts, I gotta get in on that, no, I'm just kidding.
If you wanna bid, it's open, it's a pretty big conflict of interest.
No, I can't.
But the.
Yeah, I know that.
So that mitigation system can be moved though, correct, it would cost money to move it, but it, that, um.
I'd say parts of it.
But it's size for that building, though, that's the problem, so, you know what I mean?
Sure.
It's all in square foot, cubic feet, I'm sorry.
The other thing too, is we wouldn't have, if, if we could get a safety building, we wouldn't have to order all these special trucks. And the other thing, if the police cars wouldn't be sitting out rotting in a parking lot.
What are you gonna have, so, you're gonna have an o, like a, like just a, a roof over it?
There'd be some kind of facility that'll, it depends on what they come up with, but usually they're in clothes.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's.
They should be all the parks, they're not, there's one in Marlboro, it has, just, it's just like, it's just a roof.
The old design, is that still around somewhere?
It's all the old design.
The what?
Like, you know the parking in Henry Hay, Henry Haywood with the solar panels?
Yeah. Yeah.
It's like that.
Yeah, no, the, to my knowledge, the fire trucks go.
We have the old design, that went, was voted on the last time, when, 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 when fifty votes.
Public, public safety?
Yeah, yep.
I kinda, I kinda think we're getting stuck in the weeds here. Yes, we all know we need a safety building, right, I mean, these are just goals we're talking about here.
Right.
Yes, we need, we need all these things on this list, we need, we need, and I agree with, I agree with everything. But the reality of the situation is, can we afford them, what can we do, we're, we're working on processes to convert buildings for a safety building and whatnot, we have options on the table. But we also have fires burning that we need to address, like now, right, we got school situation. We got a town administrator retiring or moving on, we've got a police chief retiring. You know, that's gonna take a solid six months, seven months, eight months of our year to recoup from those three things and get back on board. And I'm all, I'm all for working on these projects as best we can, but we gotta prioritize what our goals need to be. And I think those three things I just mentioned are taking a priority to get done and get solved. And if we can find the bandwidth to do these other things while we're solving for those three, that's great, but.
Well, a lot of these are like five to ten-year projects, so, yeah, it would be, like, we, we judge, this should be a, you know, three-year, we should look at this, this one we set on the sideburner,
Right.
this one should be a ten.
Priorit.
But you say, you say we should look at, I mean, we're looking at a town hall solution, I mean, we're looking at the, the garage up there for a solution, right? So, we are working that in parallel. You know, and all the other things are a wish, a wish list and everything everybody's saying here is good stuff and legitimate stuff, but you know, we gotta, we gotta put out the fires that are coming our way while we're working on these things.
I don't disagree with what you're saying, but in the same sense, going back to what Ryan was presenting to us, the financial opportunity that we're isn't gonna be available next year, a year after, it's available within this year and next year. So that if we decide just to go this way, then basically, this probably is not gonna happen.
Right. But just show two ways that they're connected, just so you can understand what I'm trying to get the board to, to discuss. First of all, staff retention, everyone says that we wanna retain staff. Well, we're never gonna be able to pay staff what some of the towns are gonna be able to pay.
Right.
Not gonna be able to pay at that high level. So you could choose a different option, which is to put them in a place where they can, they can work effectively, which these buildings, they cannot. That's another way to do retention without raising costs, but you would have to identify which one is the priority. 'Cause I can tell you, we do lose staff because, you know, there's places that are nicer to work, especially in the public safety side, for sure. Retention and recruiting is difficult in the public safety side because of, because of the situation we're in. Secondly, we're gonna have more, more free cash this year than, than our targets. If you identify what the goal is gonna be, like, we need to pay for these long-term costs, then your decision is pretty simple, you put money into your capital stabilization and you continue to stockpile it to meet that goal. Right now, we're not doing either, we're saying we have this money and then it gets chewed up as the priorities or the fires come out and then that capacity's gone. If you have a clearly identified goal and you say, we, we wanna do this, but we wanna limit the impact, then you should be putting money into savings first and then accomplishing the other goals, or saying no to certain things because this goal's a priority. If you identify those priorities, then all those decisions become easier and then it's more clear to the public, we're, we're not doing this project, not because it's not important, but because this is the goal right now. Otherwise, ten years from now, you'll be saying, we're still dealing with these fires and we don't have the time to get to the, and that's what's happened in the past, and that's what's happened in every municipality, it's not just Hoverson, I wanna make that point, I've beaten any board up here. It's every town ever. You know, and I wouldn't say it's so much a time thing, it's, it's a priority thing, you know, and I, and I'll use the fire truck for, for an example. I was really taken aback when Chief told me that we have a fire truck that possibly is gonna be taking off, taken off the road here, 'cause it's unsafe. You know, that's, that's an eight hundred thousand dollar bill right there, you know, that's got to be a priority, we've gotta find financing for that. When you're a town like Hoverson, if you don't have a big pool of excess money to dig, to dwell on, we can put some away for long-term planning, like you said, that, that's, I, I mean, I applaud that, that's something we should be doing. But, you know, we can't have it both ways, we can't have money to buy the new fire truck while we're saving all that money for a public safety building. You know what I mean, we've gotta have flexibility. And I, you know, we're, we're working on a public safety building, we're going down that road as we sit here today, right? I mean, we've got, we're gonna investigate that existing building and then, we talked about maybe putting up a separate building for police somewhere down there on the property. So, you know, parallel work streams, I guess, is what I'm trying to say, has, it can, has to, has to exist.
I guess in my mind, so, you know, going back to what Jeff initially started saying, going over the, you know, staff and even to Ryan's point of staff retention, to me, that's our number one priority, 'cause without staff, it doesn't mean if we have a, doesn't matter if we have a fire truck, 'cause we can't run a fire truck without people that drive a fire truck.
And it doesn't matter if you have a new building, you gotta have the staff to help, so, I mean, staff retention's gotta be huge, it's huge.
Exactly. So, but to Ryan's point, we're gonna have to get creative, right, because we can't, we can't pay the competitive rates that other places are paying, so what can we do to attract people?
So, what other towns with, what do we, what's our population, thirty-eight hundred?
Forty-nine was the last, right around that.
Yeah, we're right under.
Oh, hums, forty-nine, was that high?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're right under five.
Yeah.
All right, so what other towns with that population, what do they pay their staff?
So it's not, but I think, again, it doesn't come back to necessarily the pay piece, 'cause that's gonna be part of it, it's, you know, other benefits you can offer as well as making sure you have the right people in the first time as well, you know, going, it does get to see, I think, to Ryan's point, that people want a nice place to work, so that becomes part of it, but initially, right, so these are just random, when you go to some of these trainings, they throw out different ideas and you look at what other towns are doing. So one of the things, like Salem, Massachusetts started doing, is they started offering sign-on bonuses, so they put money aside, so if you start working there and you last, you know, thirty or sixty days or whatever, they give you a bonus. So instead of going to work somewhere else, we give you extra money off the top to start here. They also do a recruitment program, so as an employee, I, I recommend, you know, Jeff for the position, I get him to submit his application, he ends up getting hired for the job, he makes it through his probation period, I get a bonus for recruiting, essentially recruiting Jeff, because the best recruitment tool is your own people and you're likely to get people who enjoy it and wanna do it and, you know, they can sell it best themselves. You go into other things like longevity pay, right, see, you know, I can't always increase your wages, but thank you so much for being with us for five years, we wanna give you a five hundred dollar bonus for being here for that period of time, saying, we appreciate you, thank you.
Don't they have longevity now?
Do we have longevity now, we might?
Just unions.
Just unions, so all the office work is a non-union?
Okay.
They don't have health, nothing.
They don't have health insurance?
They have health insurance.
Okay, are we, are we talking, we don't have both of them?
No, we don't have retiree health insurance.
Okay.
Right.
Which is a late career problem, 'cause if you're about to retire, you're gonna move to a town that has retiree health insurance, just to support your family, it makes total sense to anybody who's looked at those costs.
'Cause of the non-union, so.
But taking that on, a town our size would say that's crazy, 'cause you're taking on a liability that others don't have.
Well, let's hope this spouse has had insurance.
I'm telling you, you're going to lose staff in the next five years over that.
Yeah. Hell, you have, I mean, health care's a huge expense for families, so.
Well, that's why, the other thing is, I think we're what, a handful of town, did you, you might have already said this, Ryan, I'm sorry, we're a handful of towns that don't in the state of Massachusetts, almost every place does.
Yes.
So we're, we're definitely, you know.
Oh, yeah, right, there, there's a lot, huge majority, everybody has it and, yeah, yeah.
That's.
Yeah, we don't.
So when you have people who are gonna be more seasoned in their career, when they could do the, some of the greater good for us, they're gonna leave us. Because they're gonna retire from a town that has retiree health insurance, they'd be silly not to.
And we don't have it because?
We don't offer it, but the liability, to Ryan's point, it costs a lot, you end up taking kids on it, on your audits, you have problems when you go out to bond if you're not funding it enough, it requires a lot of
Can't afford it.
and you have to have a lot of planning.
So a lot of other things hanging on the hook tied into that.
Your, your counterpart, ten years from now, will be like, why did you add that, we're having this annual budget problem because of that. But it's hard to see the costs of not retaining people, so with the current pay rate and benefit structure you have, you will replace people every three years, it would not, it's not a surprise.
Right. Yeah. So, staff retention is, should be a big priority now.
I agree, we, you know, we at least need to, in my opinion, make an effort to be at least competitive, if not, I use the term, I mean, I think we could take the lead on something, but at least to give, give the message to the staff itself that, hey, we're trying, we wanna do something for you, we wanna keep you, et cetera. And there are other ways of finding this out too, I mean, if we make the staff, and I feel that we should, that we should, a top priority, we should go to the staff itself and find, oh, what, what do you want, you know, and does it?
Okay, what would it take to make you long-term here, this is our long-term goal, and we use our goals, like in, you know, possible public safety building in seven to ten years or whatever, five to seven years. You know, if you give them that light at the end of the tunnel, they say, you know what, I could probably hang in for a few years, right.
They see that that is, we're working towards it.
So you gotta, but you gotta start with your, I always call it the sweeper, people at the bottom was what I was referring to growing up as a young employee. Those are the people that keep everything going normally, it's, you know, everybody forgets about the sweeper, that's what, that's what I'm trying to say, the guy that just sweeps the shop and, you know, he's a nobody. But that's actually your, your base, if you think about it, 'cause they're.
Are you talking contract people, unionized people?
I'm talking everybody.
'Cause these people are non-union.
Yeah, okay, I, I don't care whether you're union or non-union, if you want a good base of people, you gotta take care of them.
Oh, I'm totally agree with that, I'm agreeing that, right.
Yeah, so. I don't know where that sweeper thing came in, I just, you start out, start out at the bottom as a sweeper, what I'm saying, getting at is somebody, somebody you want to grow with you, okay, you start out as a sweeper, you end up as administrator, do you follow me?
Yeah.
So, but in order to keep that person, you gotta entice them with, go long-term goals.
Well, the other thing too is, it's not just like you're saying, pay.
I have a different vocabulary, I'm sorry.
And, no, you're fine. With the pay and the long-term, you know, I think these are all important too, but I'm telling you, I really think the buildings have a lot to do with it and the lack of, the frustrations that these, the employees feel with, not in the buildings, but the stuff that we give them.
Yeah.
It's constantly breaking, there's no AC, you know, there's mushrooms growing in the building, you know, there's, I opened up the door over here, I could see the roof.
Yeah. 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 There. Yeah.
You know, there's water leaking here, everything just, you know, it's all just, they don't have separate changing facilities, you know, it's, it's demoralizing.
But if we had a plan in place, a long-term plan in place, this is our plan, this is, and this is what we're working to
Yeah.
and, you know, we start retaining some staff and, you know, get, you know what, you're gonna have a place to sit down and take a break and drink a coffee or get an ice water or, you know, keep your food in the fridge if you want, a microwave, you know what I mean, they don't have a, a place to go other than your office, you gotta have that.
I definitely think it's like a two-pronged. Yeah, we gotta have that two-pronged approach on this, not only.
So, that's where I'm coming from, you know, take, you gotta take care of people.
Yeah. Because back to Katie's point too, in terms of abilities too, at what point do you reach a point of diminished returns, because of all the money you're spending on this and that?
Yeah.
We're sinking it in.
It shouldn't be replaced, it needs new, you know, so.
Yeah.
Be that the whole building needs to be gutted and stripped over, you know, it's.
Right.
Knock it down, make a park, hold on, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, it's, that's what I mean, it'd be, it's a two-pronged approach, it's a cross between the pay and the, you know, the benefits and all that stuff, along with making sure that they have the facilities to actually feel like, you know, we care, you know, um, but at the same time, it's gonna, you know, money's involved and we have to figure that part out, how do we approach this? So that way, our counterparts in fifteen years aren't going, what the hell were they thinking, you know, like, what did they do to us?
Yeah.
And the town's sinking, but at the same time, we keep sinking good money after bad, constantly, chasing all these problems.
Yeah. Correct, I agree with you on that.
You that are paying to retrain an employee because we just.
Flushing it down the toilet, that's all, it's the same thing, yeah, you patch it up for a little while and then now something else is wrong with it.
Yeah.
Yeah, you patch it up for a little while and now something else is wrong with it, and it's like a money pit, that's what it, a money pit.
Yeah, it is, it's an absolute money pit.
Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah.
So, Ryan, what do you, what would be the ultimate goal for this evening as far as these go? Are you looking, would it be helpful if we gave you like a top three list, like in the order, this is what the board is currently recognizing as the top three priorities for the town? And I know some of them have multiple tacits, like the staff retention piece starts with, you know, actually obtaining and recruiting people from staff. To KP's point, like, we don't have permanent TA yet, we need a police chief, we need a building commissioner.
With all due respect. I hear where you're going, but Ryan's here for all of two months more, right? We've got stuff we gotta get out of Ryan that he's gonna do for us, so we're set for the future with a new TA. Um, I understand everything you're saying, I understand, I s- I agree with everything that's being said here, but, um, you know, I'm all, I value your input, if you wanna tell us what you think of the priorities for the town, I'm, I'm more than willing to hear that, um.
I'm guessing, okay, P, that these priorities are gonna go beyond Ryan.
Yes.
Like, a lot of the recruit, no, but I guess what I mean is, a lot of the recruitment tools and a lot of times if you read, I don't know what the discussion was relative to community profile,
For sure.
but oftentimes, the, they will identify, the select boards identified, you know, here's what we see happening in the town for the next, but here's the projects we want you to tackle right off the bat.
Sure.
When you walk in the door, we want you to hire, find us a police chief, we want you to find a building commissioner, we want you to start feasibility study for the building department, we want you to go back in and tackle staff retention, we want you, you know, and so forth. So, I think, I think the goals in establishing them tonight, not to put words in Ryan's mouth of what you're ultimately hoping for us to accomplish this evening, but goes beyond, you know, just Ryan, Ryan, I, Ryan, I don't think you're gonna tackle any of these, I think you're just gonna document them and be like, here you go.
Right.
Right, I think what you're saying is really, our goals, whatever we end up with, okay, are really gonna be the marching orders to the new TA.
Exactly, so.
This is what we want, this is what, this is what your job, this is what we want you doing.
Yes, yes. This is where we're looking.
Yeah.
This is where we wanna head, this is the direction.
As opposed to just having them come in and have no direction whatsoever.
I mean, we can't multitask.
And to your point, that was come up in interviews, et cetera, and questions you would ask them, because this is, look at, we're working on this, how do you feel about that, how would you go about that?
Yeah.
We have something instructive and constructive to say to them, as opposed to, well, we're not really sure what we're gonna be doing. That doesn't help an interview, a person being interviewed to be a TA.
Right.
But say, uh, we want, we want a new building, have you ever done this before, what do you, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So, either why we need some things lined up.
But the other thing too is, anybody that's gonna be applying to us for a TA is probably gonna watch some of these meetings, so they're gonna wanna know where we're headed.
Of course they are.
So, by doing this, it's not only to get that person that we ultimately choose, but if that person is like, these people are nuts, you know, I have no intention on doing it, they're not gonna apply, or they're gonna move on and we don't, but I mean.
Yeah.
You make me wanna say a test word.
Well, we've got a.
And then, you know, when, when we do the interview, I'll be like, oh, did you watch, oh, you did, so on, whatever meaning, what was the test word?
We've got a lot on our plate.
Yes, what was the test word?
A lot on our plate.
Yes, I agree.
And just even, not so, even with just what we got going on now, and it's looking forward-looking, which I, I'm big on forward-looking, there's a lot on our plate.
Absolutely.
Um, between buildings and staff and chief and roads, and it's a ton of stuff.
Roads, yeah.
Um.
Welcome to the board, Peter.
And it's all tied into tax money, because you can't do it without it, so.
That and the spending, that.
But, yeah, we could definitely multitask.
But I could, I could, if you told me, these are the three things we wanna accomplish in ten years, I could calculate them, I could do the math for you. And so could anybody that's worth hiring next. The problem is, some, some years, and I'll never say anything bad about Hoversum, because I've loved working here, it's, like, especially with budget decisions, sometimes we just take things as they come, and if there's money there, then we do it. And if there isn't money there, then we don't do it, and that is how most towns approach things, but it's a little backwards. You should say, we have money this year, but these are our long-term goals, so we're gonna, we're gonna tuck this away so that we have this type of thing, you know, and that's perfect town municipal management, I get that, you go, as Chris said, keep the lights on and keep the fires going. But if you don't do both at once, you're living paycheck to paycheck, and I don't think anyone here would tolerate that in their, in their household.
Right.
But yeah, I'm trying to build a blueprint for the next person, because I think I agree with that.
That's true, yeah.
So, do we need to set some priorities?
Or try to, you know, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean.
So, so what that would look like to a town administrator in my position is, we want you to investigate the, the, where we sit in terms of wages for and benefits for our employees and bring back a report within six months or by town meeting or just something. We would like you to come up with three creative retention tools by interviewing the staff. We identify the building project as, we want this feasibility study done by December, and we want these two possible outcomes to be no more than, than this potential tax rate, because you know the people better than, than anybody on the staff in terms of what they can tolerate in terms of tax benefits. So, first identify the priorities, and then the priorities will tell you how to instruct the staff on how to go. All well, multitasking and, and keeping the fires going, like hiring the people we need to hire and making sure the tax rate is set and, and all the things that we do well.
So, the new fire truck that we need to, that's the one to replace the one that's getting ready to be taken off the road? But the truck's one to two years out, you said?
We don't, we don't need anything yet. When Chief Hayes was here, he talked about a truck that was inspected by, I don't know, fire truck inspector.
Fire service, yeah.
Take at least two years.
And he was warned that it was on its last leg and probably would not pass another inspection. And those happen annually, I believe, correct?
Yes. Is that due to, do we know if that's due to lack of maintenance or just it's, it's, it's run through its age, it's done, taken its course?
They're, well, past their age, by like ten years, perhaps.
Lack of parts, I think, yeah.
Really?
Very common.
Yeah.
Because they're, right now, eight hundred grand.
Well, yeah, if you don't have the money, you just fix the little things to keep it going, I understand that.
You know, the new vehicle would be at least two years out, right?
And we'd have to special order it to fit in that building.
Yes, yeah.
It has to be a.
Yeah, and then you know the new public safety building, now you got a short fire truck in a big bay.
Uh, yeah, that we waited two, two years for, yeah.
Two years to get, yeah, which is, the years, I know, years down the road, so.
It's like we're rock and hard to fix.
But let's say, let's say you bring the fire chief in and you ask these questions, which I recommend you do.
Mm-hmm.
And he says, you need to replace this thing in two years, and you, and you buy it, because departments, of course, always advocate for the stuff they need. Then, I know it's gonna come off as, of course, the town administrator's gonna recommend that we use funding sources for municipal items, but there's your ARPA decision, in my opinion, right there. Like, if it's such a priority and it's so expensive, use the rest of the ARPA money to, to tackle that priority. But if you don't identify the priority, you're gonna parse up that money and it's gonna look like you're picking projects that are either coming to you or.
Well.
But that means you're gonna say no to all the other projects that come up, so if it's not a priority, then don't do that, because you're gonna upset folks.
Public safety is a huge priority. Number one is.
Well, my, my question to the fire chief is, which is more of a priority, a building or the fire truck?
And the answer you're gonna get from staff is always gonna be the thing, because they think you're gonna vote for it, and they're not gonna tell you, we're not gonna say the building, because we're never gonna get it.
Yeah, no, I can't.
So, you gotta dig. They're gonna take the thing they can get.
Well, I mean, we need an ambulance, we need a fire truck.
I think we actually need two fire trucks to leave.
You know, we can't buy two.
No, not right now, no.
No, but, um.
Because there's two really old ones that are.
And I'm just using that as an example, I mean, there's a million things we need that we don't have the money to pay for it, so, I mean.
No, no, yeah, I know. I mean, you can't put out a fire if you don't have a truck.
Right.
You can't save people's lives if you don't have an ambulance.
You can't, if you don't have the employees either.
I agree.
There's, there's always that flip side, and it's like, to try to find the best solution for the long-term is my thing rather than the short-term, because the, putting out the fires, I'm just tired of putting out fires all the time, can we just put out the big blaze that's causing all these little fires? You know, not that I wanna buy a building or do this and do that, but we have to start retaining staff. We have to start fixing the roads, we have to start doing all this stuff, because all this was kicked down the can, that we, you know, kick, the can was kicked so long that now we're up to our eyeballs with all this stuff.
I agree with everything you're saying, but we can't afford it, we can't afford it.
And I think also.
Yeah.
Right.
I think, what's not being mentioned here though, I think is also, we have to continue to try to get revenue in this town.
That's why we have to. Right.
Right.
If I can just for a minute, 'cause that, that was one thing I was saying, I thought we should continue with what we started this year and reclaiming, or the feasibility study of that, getting the pit reclaimed, et cetera, cleaned up, et cetera, for, because there were people interested in some land development there, that, but these, that would be a source of revenue, I mean, on top of everything else that we're talking about, we need the revenue too. So, I, I would want that to be a goal, just to continue that, not just, it, throw it, everything we've done so far, just throw it out, because it, uh, it's still, it's still going on, right?
Well, I hope you have.
Yeah, we started the
Get them on.
investigation of the cleanup, which will result in the cleanup, and then investment in, so that's a five to ten-year target.
Cleaning up, left fifty-seven, yeah, yeah. So, so that's another thing.
What, I just don't understand, this town did not forward look for many two years, for the, for the last forty years, they didn't look forward.
Not.
Oh, no, they have.
They have, why not?
Because of this discussion.
Yeah.
So, I think, you know.
Because if you don't make decisions, then it.
Just keep kicking it down the street.
Yep, exactly.
Yeah.
In little patches and.
But if you make a decision, you're gonna not be able to do something else, and that's gonna cause you pain.
Yeah, but somebody's gotta grab the bull by the horn.
Yep.
Glad you said that, so, here's what I wrote down.
Okay, here we go.
So, based on the conversation, I'm sure I'm missing things, I have things, some things are just us, some things are the, um, town administrator, Ryan gave, gave some great suggestions, so I documented as much as I could recall. So, I have town, um, let's see, the town administrator search committee, um, with us, hire a town administrator um, and have their start date no later than October fifteenth is a goal, I think that's within realm, it might be a little bit smaller, but we'll see. Um, you can have a copy of this afterwards, Ryan, you can use that machine. Uh, start the police search, um, with a committee by October first, complete the hiring process with the, whoever the formal police chief's gonna be on January first. Uh, hire a permanent building commissioner, no later than October thirty-first. Fall special town meeting by November thirtieth, I didn't even touch a special, special for the school, because who knows when that will be?
They're moving tomorrow, so by the end of August.
Uh, survey staff on alternative retention options for three of them, and keep the cost no more than twenty-five thousand dollars increase and have that submitted to us by January thirtieth. Wanted to do something we could theoretically keep doing year over year. Uh, complete feasibility study for the public safety building by December thirty-first. Uh, recommend no more than two hundred and fifty-dollar tax impact increase, um, for the public safety building project to the select board by February first, and complete investigation cleanup of the pit by June thirtieth.
Thank you.
How about interim town, town administrator?
Is that, should be on that as a goal?
I don't know what the earlier conversation was, so I can't, like.
No, because we're, we're already activating, we're gonna, he's going to be calling the firms to see.
Okay. Oh, okay, alright.
Yeah, and matter of fact, I mean, it might be a point, you and, you and I talked this morning, this might require us to have a meeting, what, like, still for next week?
If, if you really wanna, to giddy up, to use a non-professional term.
Yeah.
Giddy up.
I'm not available next week.
Yep.
Who do you think?
Monday.
I'm on vacation.
No.
Because, if, if we, if we get a firm, et cetera, and so forth, and then we need to get the thing right, just go, going.
Well, my wife is, I'm always. I can always call in.
You go the twenty-fifth or the first.
Yeah, you can always zoom in.
Twenty-fifth or the first, well.
Yeah, zoom, whatever.
So, one item agenda where you just approve, or two items.
Yeah.
Yeah, you could call, he could call in, you know.
Oh, yeah, I could call in, I'd zoom it, whatever you want.
What's your availability?
I'm fine, I'm fine.
I'm fine. Chris, how's your availability next week?
Not available.
Well, can you zoom in?
Could you call in or?
Make a call in, real quick, for like, it'll only be like a five minute.
No, no, no.
I'm available.
There's your call, right there.
Wow, well, true, that we, like, the, on these points.
Good, it doesn't happen.
I don't know, I don't know if I'll be, I don't know if I'll be able to get, notify where I'll be.
Well, there's three of us, there's three plus four, so that's a quorum, so we can do business if we have to, okay.
Four of us. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. You could always give us your two cents in advance, too.
So, why don't we make that an option, possibly, you've got four definite. Three could be here and one on, could call in for that vote.
So, your tax, I have a question about your tax count.
Yep.
On that. Um, is that for anyone in general, because there's like houses in town that are.
That's for the median, that's always for the median, yeah.
Okay, so like two fifty, at, at two hundred and fifty, okay.
So, for the average home in town, there is actually an increase of two fifty.
So, the median, what's the average home, two hundred and fifty thousand?
Two eighty-ish.
But remember.
I don't think you'll get a building then.
So, my taxes will go up huge.
You think it's too much?
No, I think it's too little, I hate to say that.
I'm looking it up right now.
Yeah.
Well, the reason I picked that.
Because the last time it went through, or tried to go through, it was.
But we're also, I guess when I say two fifty, for me, what I mean is the, I mean, the impact, so, like, right now, if you continue the debt we have and that doesn't wear off,
Oh, I bet, it was it, it was high, it was high, okay, maybe it was. Yeah. True, we can flip that, okay, okay, alright.
I'm saying two fifty on top of that. If that makes sense.
No, that's fine, then, I, that, I can. Yeah, that makes more sense for a dollar more.
So, Ryan, you said we have, what, two hundred thousand in debt that's coming to a close or something?
Yes.
Two hundred thousand annually?
Annual.
Okay, everything's annual, so.
Yeah, one of the, what, fire trucks is coming off or something, I think, yeah.
Oh, the debt. You owe debt, you'll have.
How old is that one now?
I don't, it probably.
Is that the one that needs to be replaced?
No.
No, that's the new one.
It's the.
Oh, well, the new one, what, ten years old now?
Yeah, probably.
Yeah.
I think you are fancy.
When I first came on the board ten years ago, I won't mention specific names, but there were vehicles in the DPW that hadn't had an oil change in five years.
Well, I blame that on the person running the DPW.
But to your point about, you know, people just, they.
You gotta have flying, gotta have a plan in place. Don't tell me I can't buy oil, because you gotta have, you gotta have.
And then you wonder why, you wonder why the vehicle breaks down.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, you gotta maintain, it's, there's just no way about it, really.
I would like to see the roads, I would like to see Travis go more than five years out though, because people are always asking about where their road is on the list, if it's not on the list.
You gotta have a ten-year road plan.
I would like him to come up with a ten-year, even if it's unrealistic, just to at least get a priority of what the road, you know, like, where it falls, so that way people can see their roads, because at this point, ten years plus the years that we've already done, should have most of them on the list that have been had, at least in my mind.
Katie, when do you want the deliverable on that?
For what, the road list?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, how long you think it'll take him to put that together? Because I don't wanna rush him, it's summer season, yeah, for five years.
Well, there's already one on, there's already a road that's out, so you gotta manipulate that one.
So, you're gonna find a year, you're basically asking for another five years.
He would just have to add, yeah.
You know, just add, manipulate, spread them out, spread some of them out if you have to, or add new, or.
So, how about the end of this?
So, five-year one, I was going to deliver before I left here, um, I can easily expand it to ten, just the, the last five years are gonna be.
Yeah. Sketchy, but at least they're a priority of where it falls, unless something has to get shuffled like things have, but at least people will see their road on the list.
Yeah, what's the average life of a road, I don't know, does anybody know?
Thank you for this.
Yeah, ten years, we're gonna have to be, be doing road.
I know, I know.
Five to ten years.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly, so.
Yes, well, no, mine, mine is still.
So, in ten years, Lombard's gonna be on the, on the list again.
Yeah, no, mine's still doing good, and mine was one of the first ones to get done, Ragged Hill, they just, last year, they sprayed it with that.
Yeah. Well, it all depends on how much traffic there is on it too, so.
Yeah. It's still holding okay, it's not very bad.
So, you need a ten-year list, you're gonna start new every ten years, you're gonna interrupt it.
Well, yeah, we have to get for what hasn't been done.
All right, is there any, we have any other priorities to add on here, I'm happy to reread them again, and do we wanna revisit that two fifty?
How about our, how about our position with the school, Katie?
This. That's what I was just gonna say, that school, we need to.
I, I would like us as a board, at least based on what we've seen, not only just pa, this past year, et cetera, but every year, uh, I think we gotta be very strong in our position as solid, and, and to be realistic on what, and let, letting them know on what we can and cannot afford, what, um, why, you know.
I just, I think we should, I, why can't we fix the problem, and so that way they're, they're, well, would, no, the, the agreement that we have, all the towns,
I don't think they care, I don't think.
Well, that, yeah.
Yeah, why don't we make that a priority?
Why can't we fix the agreement?
So, do we wanna request, um, send a request to all the others, um, all the other towns in the school district that we open up negotiations?
To revisit the, uh, agreement, yeah.
Is it, do you, you may not have it memorized, Ryan, do you know there's a specific provision that we have to enact, you might be able to do that?
I will, I will live around.
I know, it's a school, right.
Sorry.
Talk about firing the first shot.
No, I'm good with that.
You don't have it memorized? Okay, but we can do that, we can ask Ryan to look up before he goes, and if he runs out of time, the next person to, um, research the current school agreement to find out what the provision is that, under which we can open up the contract.
Yeah, because we need to, there's always one town, at least, that is super host every year, and we gotta stop the way that this mechanism keeps doing that, because it's unsustainable.
And earlier, and earlier involvement on both sides, earlier involvement. And earlier, and earlier involvement on both sides, earlier involvement on both sides rather than.
I think that can come into the agreement now.
Yeah, rather than waiting until the spring to get hit with.
Yeah. Yeah, cause I know the finance committee would love to.
Well, Susan's really behind it, she made a pick point of that.
Yeah, she would love to be able to listen in and hear and be pulled in, not just get it dropped kinda thing.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
So to nerd out with you for a second, the two hundred and fifty dollar average tax bill increase would be about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year debt service, so level debt service. If you did forty years with a federal loan on a building, you're looking at about a seven million dollar borrow.
Okay, how much would a realistic safety complex cost?
So the the last data we got was somewhere between two point five and ten million.
Yeah, double it now.
Two point five and ten million, that's a huge spread.
Yeah.
But if you're using.
So the federal, John's auto versus full.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not, we're not building the gardener, police station for example.
Yeah. True, true, very true, we don't need extra rooms in all this ridiculousness, we need something that can house.
Yeah, you you're gonna have, you know, I mean, you're gonna have, you're gonna have sleeping quarters for females.
Well, yeah, you have.
You're gonna have sleeping quarters for males, separate bathrooms, so you get extra bathrooms, you know, it's just a lot evolved now.
Yeah. A holding cell would be nice, so that way we're compliant.
Oh, you gotta have a jail.
Well, we don't.
Well, you gotta have.
I know.
They have to take them to Rutland and then you're sure.
They make temporary instructions.
Short handed, yeah.
We don't have that.
So here's what I have, so one more time, make sure everyone's on the same page. Hire permanent town administrator to start by October fifteen. Start police search with committee by October first, complete hiring permanent police chief by January first. Hire permanent building commissioner by October thirty first. Hold fall special town meeting by November thirtieth, Katie, I remember you said before Thanksgiving preferably. Survey staff retention alternatives, report three options and keep the cost under twenty-five thousand for FY twenty-four's um budget impact. Complete feasibility study, public safety building by December thirty first. Recommend no more than two hundred and fifty dollar, two hundred and fifty new tax dollar impact annually increase proposal to the select board by February first. Complete investigation cleanup of pit by June thirtieth, create ten year road plan before Ryan leaves. I don't have a date on that, sorry, figured you're gonna read between the lines of that one. Uh, school research and request renegotiation of regional agreement, I wrote by September first, cause you're gonna wanna do it before budget season, but preferably if Ryan has the capacity to look up what we need to do and.
Yeah, but you're, that's a next year goal.
Oh, yeah. I mean, that's true, okay, in that case, I'm just gonna write uh twelve one.
The only thing we haven't touched is the master plan on this list of fun.
Well, the master plan essentially, once it's, once it's finalized, the first thing is to appoint an implementation committee, yes?
To do all these things you just talked about.
Okay, so then we.
That is the master plan.
Pretty much, yeah. We just made it.
Will the fire truck fall in this, the end?
Uh, next year.
Excellent.
Well, again, you know, I I think my argument is still, if you have no people, you, it doesn't matter what vehicles you have, you're not driving them. So you gotta get the people under wraps and keep them from.
Yeah. Are we having staffing issues to call firemen?
No.
Yes, everybody is.
Really?
We're having stash staffing issues for police also, aren't we?
Yeah, well, yeah, I, you know, well, I mean, it's all over the country, so we're not special.
But also with this, I know I'm being repetitive, but we're at least making them aware that we are trying to do something as opposed to them breaking, they're not doing, we're doing nothing for them, nothing's changed, et cetera.
Yeah, no, no, we're, we're gonna.
We're trying to, yeah.
Yep.
Move forward.
Uh, he is, yeah.
I don't get the feeling that people think we're doing nothing for them, I think a lot of the people understand the situation we're in.
Yeah, we don't have the money.
Right, and and to Ryan's point, they may just leave, you know, to find a greener pasture. And it's really, you know, we we can do all we can do to do that, but ultimately it's their prerogative of what they wanna do and what they need to do for their family, so. I don't think anybody thinks we're not trying to help the situation, but people close enough to the situation know uh, you know, how we're, how we're limited and how our hands are tied sometimes.
But I also think, you know, we wanna try to do the best we can because we have people who are good at their jobs, they've been here, they know the they know the job, they know the town, they know what we want, as opposed to having to re- reteach every two years, break them in, break them in.
Yeah. But I agree, I agree with what you're saying a hundred percent, and I think a lot of people think we are doing what we can
So. Yeah.
and understand that those the challenges we face when we try to do that.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Okay, so we have ten goals, is everyone comfortable with those ten goals?
Let's make it twenty.
I think ten is, and those are some hefty goals, right, that's, I think that's a good starting point.
Yeah.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you for taking those down.
When's the first time we're gonna review our goals?
Next week.
The first one is due I think in October.
Oh, the town, the town administrator.
Yeah, the new administrator, that's a great time, here you go.
Yeah.
Here's your marching orders.
But I think these are great too, to Ryan's point, cause they're also gonna give the new TA guidance with even getting the budget process started.
Yeah.
And this is also a good outline for us when it comes to asking the interviewees questions.
If there's.
Hold on, code word, what is my code word, code word.
Code word, what is it?
Clock.
Clock.
My code word is clock, I'm making note.
Oh, mean, are they watching, yes.
I I would get used to saying, when you hear proposals from me or someone like me, how does this impact the goals that we've already talked about? Spending money on this, how does this impact that? And one of the things I was doing from afar and maybe not advocating well is the reason why that the ARPA request from my office was to fund capacity in the fire department was so that we could keep the debt service open for these potential positions. So you have to think with the limited resources we have, as Chris keeps mentioning, if you're not thinking two or three moves down the line, then you're not gonna be able to afford it. But you can afford it if you have a longer term plan, so we have two hundred thousand in our capital stabilization or one hundred and fifty or sixty, right, that's part of this puzzle. Maybe you tuck money into that so that you can eventually just buy a fire engine, if you're comfortable with doing that in five years, then putting a hundred thousand aside is doable, but that means you're not using that hundred thousand for roads, so that's gonna cause pressure and and pain for the board for sure.
And no matter which way we go, you know, there are people.
Yep, you just gotta pick.
Yeah, it's gonna, no matter what you do, it's gonna be people unhappy.
So. Right. So, uh, we prepared then to leave the workshop for now, intensive.
Yes, please.
Chris has had enough, peace out.
Okay. Alright, then, uh, thank you all for that, thank you Heather for her work there. Anything on to old business? Ryan, do you have anything?
I have anxiety now.
Just really quickly, I didn't put together a TA report this week, uh, so I'll do it verbally, um.
Short term is disease.
Yeah. Not not trying to encompass all these things. Uh, so Officer Bergeron was appointed Sergeant Bergeron to start his three month uh interim period, so congratulations to Sergeant Bergeron. Uh, part of our staff mobility that was included in the appointing of Chief Kuchar. We have finalized the premium pay application for employees and are receiving those back and helping employees work through it, also identifying employees that were here that are no longer here. And wrapping up the green communities grant so that the next town administrator does not have to deal with that, and that should be finalized by se- by the end of September. And then an important one, working with the planning board and the town clerk to make sure that our bylaws are fully updated and posted to make sure that we're fully compliant with all the different changes that we've made over the last couple of years, some of those include non-substantive changes, including adding maps that we were supposed to attach or commas and periods and and those types of things. So town council's working on that, it's gonna have a fifteen hundred dollar price tag to it, but I I think it's worth spending that money and not tying up the staff on doing editing and making sure that we're fully legally compliant, so you're gonna hear more about that in one, the first time to be when I'm presenting it too, but that is to make sure that all of our bylaws are updated and everybody that comes in is getting is getting the right information and everybody's on the same page. Lastly, the, or two, two last things, the dispatch meeting has been scheduled with Rutland, they did a stakeholders meeting this week.
Wow.
Um, did not invite the town administrators, but the stakeholders from the public safety side are meeting.
Okay.
And then the week after, we're having a big joint meeting with representatives, so, um, I know Jeff said he wanted to come to that meeting if the board's happy with that.
Awesome. I'd go, I'd love to go.
Two, two representatives would be great, so you can hear firsthand some of the stuff from the town.
So you'll keep us, uh, let us know.
Who are we sending to the stakeholders meeting?
I'm going, um, and then I hear Jeff and Peter volunteer as long as everyone's okay with those two.
When is that now?
Next Thursday, Wednesday.
Oh, I won't be here.
What's the date, what's the date on that, Ryan?
Oh, what time? I'm trying to think, I think we're coming back Thursday, so.
I'll be during the day though.
I won't be here.
Alright, go.
Anybody from public safety?
Sorry, it's Tuesday the twenty-sixth.
Tuesday?
So they're meeting just public safety this week, next week it's the select board.
Twenty-sixth?
Yeah, I'm.
Is that also an AM meeting, is the last one gonna be ten AM?
It's publicly, it's publicly. Yeah. Ten AM.
Other.
Can we go together?
Yep.
Alright, so.
There's publicly, public safety.
This is the twenty-sixth of what, Jan, uh?
July.
July.
Yeah.
You're putting for January on it.
January.
Invited?
Ten AM, Peter, ten AM is the meeting in Rutland, yeah.
Ten AM? Ten AM?
For the second one?
Yes, Rutland, we're at the town hall, or the fire, police station?
Yeah.
So.
They usually have, they have it in the library, I think.
It's like where conversations go.
Sorry.
I'm trying to find out the.
Tuesday, ten o'clock, the meeting will be in Rutland, either the town administrator chambers or the chambers, that's.
You'll crack me out and crank out an email, remind us?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And who's gonna be there from fire and police?
Fire and police are meeting this week, town administrator select board next week, one is to discuss operations and next is to discuss IMA and budget and personnel.
Okay.
Tuesday, July twenty-sixth.
The very last thing, Cruz and Thompson Road, Chapter ninety project completed the first round, there are some minor apron stuff that needs to be completed and then the second coat of pavement is going on next week. So, um, that in addition to the wrap funding, we got approval from the state to start the wrap project, so those will be starting this month and we'll be pushing out the notifications, so. All the road work should be completed uh by mid-August and, uh, God help them with Travis, getting them to get in here before costs go up.
All the, all the road work for this year?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thompson Road was ridiculous, and Road was horrible.
Okay, uh, I.
It is not that, very nice.
Anything else, I, anything else on the TA report?
That's it.
I just have one.
Um, I have, go ahead.
I just have a quick question, so Ryan, I'm sure you're following same as I, um, with the legislature and the current budget pieces, including for Chapter seventy and some of the school related pieces, do you anticipate that when the school meets, school committee meets tomorrow, that they're gonna take into consideration with their numbers and potentially reduce the assessments based on the fact, you know, likely they're gonna have an increased number of eight, amount of eight?
They did?
Nope. Well, they, no, I don't think they will. I anticipate it.
Okay.
I can promise you.
No.
Okay.
I think you gotta take the extra.
I think it'd be, I think it would be a logical anticipation.
He said, he said. Our position is gonna change much at all.
Let's hope.
I do not have details on the budget, but I will have that ready for you, if we do meet next week, I can have it ready for you then.
From the finance. Yeah. And that's tentatively gonna be when, Monday?
Monday, six thirty, three items, I can see the budget, the
Oh.
What's the date?
Opening of the warrant and the town administrator decisions, um.
So that's the twenty-fifth, okay.
Yep. Um, send a Zoom link for that, I may or may not be able to get on that, please.
It'll be a quick one, right, just one item, correct?
Oh.
Well, those three.
Three?
He just said three.
So.
Oh, okay.
I will, I will, I will have to do it by phone, uh, Tuesday, is this twenty-sixth the next day?
No.
Where?
No, he said Monday the twenty-fifth.
Monday the twenty, the Tuesday's in Rutland, this is next week?
Yeah. Yes.
I won't be around for Rutland.
Oh, okay, well, alright.
Yeah.
No, aren't you going on vacation?
I am.
Well.
I've just got a little ahead of myself, so.
I'm, I'll be going to the, to the, so.
Can you do the Zoom though on Monday?
I can.
Okay.
So Zoom or telephone, whatever you, if I get a Zoom link, I'll Zoom in.
Okay.
Okay.
All the way from Tennant's Harbor.
So Ryan, you mentioned, um, the premium pay topic, is that going to be an ARPA?
Yes.
Application?
It's been approved already.
Okay.
It's just executing that application.
Okay, when is the second wave of that money coming?
We received a piece of it, we don't know why we received all of it, we have a request into the state to say, where's our other five hundred thousand, but we got about two hundred and fifty thousand.
Of the second.
Tranche.
You just spent it on your budget.
Which is a word that was made up during COVID, I'm convinced.
Nice. Okay.
Okay, I don't have any policies to review, none, Matt is not reasonably into the chair, I don't have anything, does anybody else have anything else?
Good. I have something.
Go ahead.
Um, the clock on the school has not been working. It says twelve o'clock. And I guess it's been saying that for quite some time, so we know why that, um, why that's not working and what we need to do to fix it.
I have asked three times so far.
Oh, really?
Not to butt in on this, I actually asked something for you, my son happens to work over there at a school, after he does janitorial during the summer.
Okay.
And he talked to Mister Matt and John over there, and apparently the motors only last for three months or six months. In between that timeframe, so they gave up on replacing them because they're not worth it. And that's what I heard, now granted, take this with a grain of salt, because it's coming from a sixteen year old, okay, so, but.
This is why you didn't get that report from me.
Yes. So take this with a grain of salt, but apparently the motors don't work well enough to warrant
Three to six months.
them wasting their effort, buying them to go up there to replace them when they only last for so long as not. And I can actually ask Mister Matt when he gets back for vacation, if you like, Chris, I will, I will gladly.
Okay, you little clock keeper going up to winding it.
Yeah, that's right.
I'd like that story verified if I could find somebody in this school.
Okay. As an adult, as an adult.
I'm not, I've been trying.
Okay.
Okay.
Feel like giving them grace because of the budget.
I will, I'll let, let me, let me dig into that.
Who owns the clock?
This one.
It's part of the Quavon, or is it?
Our, our school. It's our school.
It's our school.
Our Quavon.
Okay, so call the Quavon administrator, what's wrong with the clock?
I did that.
You did that?
I don't know what else to do.
Mostly experienced.
You did that already?
Of course I did, he's asked, this is his third request.
Yeah, I know, we brought it up last week.
That's, that's what I asked my son, I'm like, dude, let me find out what's going on with these stupid clocks.
Okay, finally.
And make a motion to adjourn.
Public, public press, no, and yes, go ahead.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, hi, thank you all for your hard work, thanks Ryan, thank you.
Hi.
Okay, I will ask Mister Matt when he gets back for vacation.